Eric, we're good. Yeah, you're on.
We're reversing the order because on the advice of council, the item that was first, he thinks we should go into closed session to discuss. And so, we're gonna go ahead and talk about Merchant. And we're gonna go into closed session. And then, we expect to have a closed session after the regular meeting. So, we'll just adjourn the closed session and then reopen it after the regular meeting.
Okay. I guess I'm here following the comments from Mr. Brownie last meeting concerning Fifth Street as far as the traffic. I got an opportunity, I talked to Buck, and addressed some of the school issues as far as where the heaviest traffic would be from school. My understanding, and I certainly don't mean to put words in his mouth, goes here, but the heaviest traffic would be school traffic in the morning going to the school. Talking to all the residents, with the exception of one, Mrs. Bosler, everybody was very much in favor and very appreciative that we were looking into the possibility of making Fifth Street a one-way street, as they suggested probably northbound only. That would allow the school bus traffic in the morning to get up through there. Took some measurements today. The street itself is a little over 20 feet wide when there's no vehicles parked there. Mr. Beckerman parks his cars, truck there almost all the time. And there's a little over eight feet with his truck parked there as far as the width of the street. So, it is definitely problematic, and all of them were very anxious to point out how problematic the...
The mayor was underneath. I'm sure I oughta get underneath to ask him what was going on.
I guess so.
I don't think that's gonna last very long. I don't know if you just say that when you're under the table.
That's fine, that's fine. So, I guess I just wanted to get the board's thoughts. I mean, I know a one-way street is not really ever ideal.
You talk about one-way full-time?
One-way full-time, northbound only, from probably Fifth Street or from Market to Jefferson.
Is that preferable to no parking on the street any time?
We have no parking on the westbound side, which is the cemetery side now. It's not, it's not, there's no signage there, but we haven't really had an issue with that. I didn't realize that when we passed the ordinance, we passed the ordinance before they did the Safe Routes to School project, I believe. But I didn't realize no signage had been ordered for that. But that's not really been an issue with people parking on that side of the street. However, there's a few houses that have no off-street parking. Mrs. Bosler being one of them, which surprised me that she was not in favor of it, but you know, she has her reasons, I'm sure. But she was the only one of the residents there, and I talked to both residents that actually face Jefferson and Market, but have driveway access off of Fifth Street, and they were both in favor also.
I can't believe she wasn't in favor of it, 'cause she's moving down here to the sharehouse.
She's moving, and she told me that. She told me that she's moving down to Gaverie, but she said she's just not in favor of the... And I invited her here tonight if she wanted to address the board and make any comments. So, I think that it would, I think that it would make sense just traffic-wise. If we don't do it, I will certainly continue to urge my guys to try to work traffic there. It's just a difficult area to work traffic, especially before and after school, 'cause it bunches up and the complaints of the speed are not easily detected just because of equipment capabilities. But certainly something that we would look at, one way or the other.
So, you're saying that cable park on one side is really not sufficient with two cars passed?
It's eight feet, a little over eight feet when one car is...
Or lane?
No, total road width when there's a vehicle parked there.
That means my rollback won't go up through there. I had to imagine it's one vehicle.
It says 21 feet curb-to-curb overall, eight foot, 8.2 feet from the driver's side of the vehicle to the curb.
So, that makes the vehicle 13 feet wide?
Oh, so they don't pull all the way up the curb.
Yeah.
By the time you get your mirrors sticking on and everything.
And the real concern would be EMS, right?
EMS and just overall traffic flow as far as somebody maybe doing the 20 miles.
Your truck through there hasn't anywhere.
Could get an ambulance.
Well, that's it. Are some of these trucks that's got oversized wide tires.
I mean, school buses are going through with the truck parked there. So, I probably need to recheck that measurement I had off the front door. Sounds narrow.
It's pretty tight.
Yeah.
But what about from, you would go from Market to Jefferson?
Probably yes.
That's how I guess it makes no sense. But you really don't have the problem from Market to Merchant, do you?
There would be a problem, yes, we do. I mean, one of the residents specifically mentioned that the La Roses that live there on the corner that have a garage right on the roadway, so they don't have off-street parking. And when they park their vehicles there, anybody approaching from Fourth Street, turning onto Fifth Street, has to swing wide to get around cars there. And if there's oncoming traffic there, then that is an issue right there at Market and Fifth. So, they're parking on Fifth Street there by Market, so when you're coming on Market, turning onto Fifth Street from Fourth Street, it's kind of a blind turn there. And if there's cars coming, then you're already kind of pot-committed by the time you get into the turn there, by the time you come onto the southbound traffic. Does that make sense?
I guess it does. I thought this last block was a whole lot wider than that middle block, the Merchant to Jefferson block.
It probably is, because it comes out from that wall.
Right. Yeah, you're not dealing with the wall.
Right. And that may be the difference in the 21 feet and the eight feet.
There is quite a bit of traffic in the afternoon on Fourth Street. That's just like, I know I've been through there with...
Yeah.
It's just one long line from Market all the way to Washington.
All the way in front of the church and the church school. I mean, when I'm in my three-quarter inch track, I just gotta pull over and wait and let all the traffic go by until somebody else pulls over on the other side and wait.
Right.
So, those, we have those instances around town that are certain conditions.
And then, you have all the school bus traffic, or a lot of the school bus traffic that goes up to Ninth Street. So, letting out there isn't feasible to let them turn out and go back in front of school and go up to Ninth Street, 'cause then that'll congest. I was just throwing it out as a suggestion.
What do we need to hear?
If you would like to make it one-way, northbound, we have to adopt the ordinance for your next meeting.
I'm gonna lean on Eric and Buck and seem to have the most real data. So, I'm gonna go with your way you guys said, but I don't know.
As far as a safety concern, I mean, I think it slows down traffic, which is not a bad thing. However, on the hill crest itself, if somebody's coming over and there's already somebody passing that truck, I mean, you could have a safety issue there. Like I said, overall, I know it's not ideal to have any more one-way streets than you absolutely have to have.
I don't think you have much choice.
Do it at the next meeting, first reading, and we do second reading at the first of October. We need to have an implementation schedule that will work out, where we send out proper notices to everybody. That'd take several weeks, run and add to paper and go with that stuff. So, probably not looking for implementation until...
No, we're...
Is this just from Fourth to, or from Market to Jefferson?
Jefferson. Not all the way up to Washington?
Yeah, I was wondering about that, too. Could be an issue if you had some large vehicles coming from school and getting to Jefferson.
That's, I lived in that area for a while. If people are parked on both sides of the street, that's a problem, that one block.
I didn't poll, I'll have two weeks to do that, but I didn't poll the residents from Market to Washington.
Yeah, I mean, they'll still be parked. If they're parked on both sides, one ain't gonna be able to park anymore one-way.
Well, you could still, you could still park on both sides of the street then, but then you could have them both facing the same way. And if you're eliminating one-way traffic...
You're doing one-way traffic, so...
That wouldn't necessarily affect parking as much as it would just ease of access, especially for the people up on the Washington Street side.
I think it needs to be the whole thing. I hate when, I hate when the street is chopped in half and only part of it's one-way.
And then, that would kind of lend itself, because across from that is the one-way going into the school property anyways. So, I mean, that would, that would work out okay.
How about another problem, Mary, at Jefferson between Fourth and Fifth?
We have, we have problems with people parking there. And, I mean, we've addressed that several times, the Valley students.
Jefferson's. I think some of it, Dwayne, I drove by the one painter, like Culver there, too scared to get close to it.
Yeah, one, well, but one side of the road is all painted yellow, there's no parking on the north side of the road essentially. And then, we have complaints, it's two-hour parking on the opposite side of the road, which isn't strictly enforced unless there's complaints. You know, especially now, we try to be somewhat reasonable with Valley doing their construction and blocking off parking lots. However, when people complain about the parking there, you know, we definitely take all the steps that we can to mitigate it without taking an over-strict enforcement actions. But, you know, it's one of those, it's difficult. If you're gonna have an ordinance that you don't really enforce, to keep it on the books. However, you know, we've run into some headbutting before with that very issue, people parking on that side of the road and taking enforcement actions, so...
I just think it's more of a problem now with the construction. Maybe after the construction's done, it'll get better and there's more room for the students to park over by the Roger building.
We have a conversation about when they're gonna open that up for student parking, several months ago.
I was thinking that was discussed when they were proposing the closure for the, to begin the construction, but I don't know if they've taken much consideration, 'cause I think it's still closed down, isn't it?
It is. And I can understand the contractor's point. His point was, it's my only, it's the only place I can bring in big trucks for equipment deliveries. And we were sympathetic to that, but I thought he said that's gonna be over pretty soon.
Yeah, I was thinking mid-semester was when they were shooting for a projected end date for the overall construction.
I would think another month or, you would be a month, or certainly six weeks or two months. It should be pretty close. Now, they got, you know, scaffolding up for a tough point, and all of a sudden, they're tearing that sidewalk down.
I mean, in the grand scheme of things, we're talking about three, four cars that are able to fit in that, in that section of the street. So, even if we took strict enforcement action there or prohibited it, it's not like displacing the entire school population that drives, but it has been a bone of contention every time this has come up, so...
Joe Roger, he might have an idea.
I think they're wanting about the end of October, but it's not gonna be completely done where everything's moving in there, but...
But, you know, once they've completed the exterior modifications, you don't have falling problems, and you don't have the I-beams coming in anymore, you know, maybe they can consider opening that up.
Do we, obviously, Fifth Street seems to be the topic, 'cause it's, I mean, you go up and you look at Sixth, and you look at Seventh, and, I mean, they're all about, they're all about the same.
Ninth Street especially.
Where we stop is, I don't know. And the other side of it is, how many, God forbid that you end up with an accident on Fifth Street or whatever, but history would show that probably that hasn't been an issue, so...
Right. I mean, you've changed the factors a little bit with the sidewalk, I mean, that, several feet, which we didn't have prior to last year.
Eric, there used to be a yellow, no parking across from the church there by Betty Dunsey's to the old doctor's office as you're going toward Fourth Street there.
I don't know that it extended all that way. By ordinance, you have 20 feet from an intersection that's no parking. And I know that there have been issues with trucks trying to make that...
Right, right. Yeah, they set the one-down Merchant there and by the cemetery, and that was worse than...
Well, and I, that was my fault, but we had bottleneck, and he couldn't back up anymore, and he couldn't pull forward anymore. And I said, "Wait here, I'll go find out who this, the owner of this car is." And by then, he had started going straight, and I'm like, "Well, let's just make it work." So, yeah, definitely not ideal there. I'll touch base with Dave again and make sure he rethinks that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else that...
So, you wanna try the one-way to Fifth Street? Yeah, I agree with Towne. I mean, these two guys know, and the residents there, I mean, almost all of them are in favor of it. All the way to, all the way up to Washington?
I will pull, I'll have two weeks to do that. I'll get with Pam and go all the way.
Okay.
So, the direction is determine the support or lack of support for that from Jefferson to Washington. And if there's support, prepare an ordinance for one-way, all the way. If you don't get that level of support...
Which I would take is just overwhelming support.
Well, you know, if one person says no, they say okay, maybe they'll... But then, if there appears to be some level of reasonable, reasonable level of opposition to that idea, should we prepare an ordinance for just from Market to Jefferson? Or do you want us to bring it back for discussion?
Bring it back for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close this on the way out?
Please.
We need to get all this off, too.
You probably wanna have those guys stay in. Yeah, you stay in.
Yeah, but the microphone's in there.
They did motion.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Mayor Grimmisher.
Here.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Martin, I guess you're up.
Personal appearances?
No, I don't.
That's why we don't, the citizens. Making progress with the appraisal of the property for the Parkwood Road extension. He runs Real Estate Services, has met with representative of the Church Finance Committee and has been over here and talked to me, and been talking to DNR and, DNR Department of Transportation. And so, hopefully, that work will be done in the next couple of weeks. The, I mentioned to you our meeting with the railroad on the North Main Street drainage issues. And one of the things that the Levy District has been, Levy District has, we didn't, you know, whatever.
We didn't turn that off. No, I didn't go for that sword. It's all there.
The Levy District has been working with the county under a state grant for some disadvantaged workers, and they're like equipment operators. And they've been doing work around the levy and the drainage areas. So, I approached the Levy District at the last meeting about the possibility, if these people had time, within the time allowed, of opening up that drainage way through Mr. Ho, Hope's property, that is kind of one of the issues. And so, Felix Meyer is evaluating that. So, maybe that work can get done using that money, that labor and equipment that's been available to the county under that grant. The, I met with Harry Gag about the Market Street property, Merchant Street property. We have, I told him we got less money than he wanted to do the project, and we talked about that in a work session, and I met with him subsequent to that. And he said, "It's, you know, it's pretty tight." He gave us a really good deal. And so, I talked about how we would do it, and we've agreed in principle, but it requires us to have kind of a unique contract. And so, since, rather than practice law and writing new contracts, I sent an email to Frank, who's back today, and I don't know if you've seen it, but I asked Frank to draft that agreement between the city and Mr. Gag to cover the points that we have verbally agreed to as a result of that meeting. Essentially, we're agreeing to pay him. If he demolishes the structure, he's entitled to whatever salvage materials he can get, and he restores the site, which means create it and cede it and straw it, and then he gets, he gets the real estate. As you know, he's working with somebody about putting another structure on that building. Following our last discussion, we prepared a abatement order for the property on South Fourth Street, which we will send by certified mail and regular mail to the one address we have, Jennifer Connolly. And it will order her to remedy the problem, or the city will act under our ordinances to seek a remedy. I have been talking to interested parties who would be interested in acquiring it. They're, they've had the same problem I have, they're making phone calls, there are interested parties, but she isn't returning anybody's phone calls. So, we'll see if we can't get her attention with a letter. We already talked about the more at our last session together. And finally, I'd like to announce, because this comes up every year, that at the Community Services Foundation meeting I attended, the wholesome representative said that the household hazardous waste collection is scheduled for Saturday, October the 25th. And that came after we had prepared the report and it had been sent out to you. So, the St. Genevieve County Household Hazardous Waste Collection at the Recycling Center is scheduled for Saturday, October the 25th. And he didn't tell the hours, but generally, it's, last time it was nine to two or something. Any questions?
See, there's a temporary patch on the crossing on Test Street.
I don't know how that happened.
I don't know. I see, what, concrete or something, quickcrete?
I saw that myself.
Anything else?
So, you're still working on the ties, replacements?
We are.
No staff reports tonight? Any committee reports? Okay. Below the minutes of the August 28th meeting?
Move approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got a couple resolutions. Resolution 201430, resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent to apply for a grant from the St. Genevieve County Community Development Fund in the amount not to exceed $7,091 for the St. Genevieve Police Department for the Operation Invest Invest.
Move approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 201431, a resolution appointing Joe Roger to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Move approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 201432, resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, declaring the property located at 498 South Fourth Street a nuisance and directs the Community Development Director to issue an order of abatement to the known heirs of Aloys...
Aloysius.
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 Aloysius, okay. And Donna Holtop, deceased owners of the property. Such order shall be served by certified mail, return receipt, and publication in a local weekly newspaper.
Motion approved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Old business, bill number 3986, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2014 Budget relating to the Debt Service Fund Budget Number 50. Move approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yeah.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3986 now becomes ordinance 3925.
Thank you. Bill number 3987, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2014 Budget relating to the General Fund Budget Legislative Number 10.
Move approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3987 now becomes ordinance 3926.
Thank you. Bill number 3988, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2014 Budget relating to the Government Grant Fund Budget Number 19. Moved approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3988 now becomes ordinance 3927.
Thank you. Bill number 3989, second reading.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to modify the National Professional Service Agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Motion approved.
Second. Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3989 now becomes ordinance 3928.
Thank you. New business, bill number 3991, first reading.
An ordinance adding section 230.035 recreational fires to the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter 230, solid waste.
An ordinance adding Section 230.035 recreational fires to the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 230, solid waste.
Yes.
Did we get, I know last time we talked about this, I asked if Mick had a chance to look at it. Did he get a chance to make any suggestions to this?
I have not heard from Mick.
Do you, do you say anything?
No, I didn't, I was, okay. But did you ask him about it though, Martin?
I thought I did. You could-
I'll do it in a week.
Yeah, right.
Motion to approve then.
Second.
Let's catch that. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Bill number 3992, first reading.
An ordinance approving the budget for the City of St. Genevieve for Fiscal Year 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Public comments, anyone?
Thank you. I'm Leslie Barker, the director of the Bolduc House Museum. Tom Couch suggested that I should appear before you occasionally to share what the National Society of the Colonial Dames of America in the state of Missouri is doing here in St. Genevieve, especially now as we're in a significant transition to become an expanded and rebranded tourism destination that we are beginning to call New France, the other colonial America. For those not familiar with the society, the Missouri Society is incorporated in Missouri as a nonprofit organization and also has 501(c)(3) tax exempt designation from the IRS. There are about 165 individual members who belong to the Missouri Society. None of them live in this county. Most live in St. Louis, Columbia, and Kansas City. Our Bolduc Historic Properties is the main project of the Missouri Society whose nonprofit purposes include education around our nation's colonial history, historic preservation, and patriotism. So since 1949, when we purchased the Lewis Bolduc House, the investment in the acquisition, restoration, preservation, maintenance, and operation of the properties here in town have been lavish and without any personal gain accruing to any of the members or to the organization. We employ local members of this community and use mostly local contractors. For decades, we've done this. We pay payroll taxes, levy taxes, and unrelated business income taxes when due. Our admissions and sales generate less than 25% of the cost of doing business here. The rest comes from individual donations and grants. For example, we have recently received two grants from the Versailles Foundation, one to help with the cost of replacing the Cedar Shake roof on the national historic landmark, Lewis Bolduc House, and the other to hire a horticultural historian to do research and make recommendations about the restoration of the Rose Garden at the John Baptiste Valley House. In the past two years, we've acquired three new properties. We've begun to utilize the John Baptiste Valley House. Project Pioneer enjoyed meeting there during Gir de Fête. The Francois Valley House is in need of a historic structures report and some archaeology prior to a restoration project to return it to its original configuration. The Bank Building needs significant cosmetic work. It lacks flooring, walls, and ceiling tiles, and will also need additional restroom stalls before we can use it as planned for our main entrance shop, archives, offices, meeting space, and a museum about New France. The new roof on the Lewis Bolduc House will cost $72,000. You will have noticed that our stockade has a Band-Aid where three posts fell over the day before Gir de Fête. In 1957, each post cost $26. There are more than 1,000 posts. We're working with a local sawmill on a plan to replace these posts, which of course will need to go through the Colonial Dames Board Review Process, and then we'll need to do fundraising for them. I'm grateful for the support of the local community in making donations to the library, the roof, our transition to local history, and to the Adopt an Artifact program in addition to general operating support. We have become dependent on local people who have contributed so far this year 1,078 hours of volunteer time. They're retirees, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, high school students, and homeschoolers. We're also grateful to the city for the use of its tent for our outdoor performances such as the Moliere play last month. We're very happy that the city installed a pedestrian crosswalk between the Linden House and the Torre Houses across Main Street. We often have large groups of elementary school students who need to cross Main Street, and this has really helped. Next month, I'm speaking on the role of the Colonial Dames in the preservation of St. Genevieve at the Missouri Preservation Conference in Exchelsure Springs near Kansas City. This is just one of the ways that we're trying to bring attention to St. Genevieve. I hope this summary of what we've been doing and what we are doing in the near future will serve as an encouragement to you, and I personally want to thank all of the elected officials for your service to our community. Thank you. I will, yeah. I just want to say that you and your staff do a magnificent job at the properties, and I'm proud to call myself a neighbor of the Bolduc House properties. Appreciate that.
I would like to thank you for coming tonight and just fill in the board in on what your organization does. I mean, we see you and we know you're active, but to, I don't think that general citizens in St. Genevieve understand the dollars of investment, the scope of what you've done in the last five years, and your plans for the next five.
Yeah, I really appreciate you inviting, because that was a little bit scary.
Really? I'd like to recommend next time, and I think it's a great idea to have, you know, annual or semi-annual reports, great. Let us know you're coming. We'll put you on as, in the presentation section.
Okay.
And then we can all look forward to your comments.
Thank you so much, Martin.
Do you have four properties, is that correct?
We have the Linden House, the Lewis Bolduc House, the Bolduc Lumiere House, the John Baptiste Valley House, the Francois Valley House, and the old First Bank Building. So six.
As far as historic, do you have five?
Correct. Yeah, and we'd like to think about them as we grow more as a campus than as a series of properties, but that's-
Because they're all pretty much right there.
They're very close. It's like the first Commandant's House in the new town, and then the last Commandant's House. So that's like the beginning and the end of the colonial story.
Right.
And then the Bolduc House functions as the core of it.
Leslie, I just want to reiterate what Tom was saying. I don't think the community really realizes the investment that that group has in this community.
It's huge.
And how long it's been here. It's-
Since 1949, yeah.
And how much it takes to, you know, like you say, 25% of your operating budget is just from admissions. I-
Admission and sales combined.
Okay, and sales, but it's for people that, you know, it obviously is one of the biggest drawing things to our community. We appreciate and certainly your expansion.
We are really, we're getting a lot of attention from people who are very excited about what we have and what we can talk about.
Do you have plans on opening up the other house to the public?
The John Baptiste Valley House is now where we've housed the Rogier Library Collection and some other, you know, the Colonial Dames Library. We have some of Mel Thurman's books there. That's available, especially on Wednesdays, because I have somebody dedicated to the library on Wednesdays. Project Pioneer, like I said, was there. Our hope is to use that house more as an event space and then the garden. The Francois Valley House needs a total renovation. That's the one on South Gabary. But the archaeologists are very excited about it because it's been untouched. It's also a vertical log house. So that's going to take considerable research and architectural and archaeological expertise before we know what we're doing with it.
Headlining.
Well, that too. That's, that's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, other business. We have approval of a street closure request from Deana Kreitler, chairperson with Project Graduation 2015 for the closure of Progress Parkway on Saturday, October 18th, starting at 6:30 PM for a 5K night glow race.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a little bit of an issue with apartments being there now?
Yes, but no different than-
No big deal?
We've figured out a way to work with them.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the approval of a street closure request for the Lions Club Backstoppers Rally scheduled for Sunday, September 28th. The request is to close Market Street between Third and Main and Second Street between Market and Merchant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Approval of a request from Deana Kreitler, executive director with the St. Genevieve Chamber of Commerce to use the lampposts in the downtown area for their 12th Annual Scarecrow Spectacular.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'd like to open a, open Bernie from the US. Things are going to start happening here right shortly and-
Effective, effective, right immediately?
Immediately do it, like the middle of October to the first of December or something like that.
I think things are going to change this year.
Things are going to change for, I think, first of October or something like that.
I think we better do it sooner than that. I thought last year it was the whole month of October.
I thought we did it to the end of the year.
It was extended last year.
I thought it started October 1st last year. We might want to start sooner this year. We've got those polar vortexes coming in.
We get one cold day, you guys.
There are a lot of leaves dropping right now.
Starting to see them drop.
Really?
A lot of that's drought, I think.
Yeah. But that's still going to drop.
Fifteenth, start Monday.
Fifteen?
And there's restrictions on that for wind speed and-
Right, there always is on that.
Always the same, okay.
For how long?
Through the end of October and look at it then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I still got to do my spring cleanup.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
opposed? Anything else?
I move to go into closed session. Is that right?
Yeah.
Where was I?
You were sleeping.
No, I'm good.
To discuss litigation?
To discuss litigation.
Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yeah.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Channel 7 and 98 TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.